Good evening. We welcome you here to our city council meeting. We call this meeting to order of our regularly scheduled meeting. That's better with the microphone. We declare that we do have a quorum present. All members of the council are here tonight. With that, we will turn to Councilman Vincent to ask the opening ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a video that I'd like to have played and maybe a few remarks after that.
The industrial revolution modernized the United States and Canada during the 19th century. As people enjoyed steady employment, they compromised their rights in the workplace. Longer work hours and pay cuts were imposed. U.S. laborers began protecting themselves by unionizing. In Canada, unions were illegal until 1872, when thousands of Ottawa laborers marched to Prime Minister John McDonald's home. That year, Canada lighted the anti-union law from its books, and the march became an annual Canadian tradition. In 1882, Toronto labor officials invited an American labor leader, Peter J. McGuire, to Toronto's labor celebrations. McGuire was so impressed that he suggested a workers' parade to New York City's Central Labor Union. He chose September 5th as the date because it filmed a long voyage between July 4th and Thanksgiving. Coincidentally, that same year, a machinist from Patterson, New Jersey, Matthew McGuire, also proposed a labor celebration. On Tuesday, September 5th, 1882, thousands of New York City laborers marched from City Hall to Union Square. They gathered in Reservoir Park for an afternoon of picnics, concerts, and speeches rallying for an eight-hour workday. Two years later, the Central Labor Union moved the parade to the first Monday in September. They also encouraged all U.S. cities to follow New York's lead and march for the working man's holiday. For many, the choice was to either spend the day at work or march without pay. That began to change when Oregon became the first state to legalize the Labor Day holiday in 1887. Other states, including New York, soon followed. It took a political disaster to Labor Day on the national calendar. In 1894, railway workers in Pullman, Illinois went on strike to protest wage cuts. President Rover Cleveland faced pressure to end the demonstrations and sent 12,000 federal troops to break the strike. Violence erupted. Two strikers were killed, and Cleveland's harsh methods made headlines. In an attempt to appease the nation's workload, he signed a bill to make Labor Day a federal holiday. Cleveland still lost that year's election. America's workers continued to gain power through the 1950s, when over a third of all labor forces quickly reunited. Labor Day had become a time to rally workers for safer conditions, fair pay, and benefits. But in the second half of the 20th century, the U.S. labor force diminished. Many factories closed. Jobs were outsourced to other countries. Today, workers still parade through blue-collar neighborhoods on Labor Day, and speeches unite the ever-dwindling labor force. But the day's true call has quieted. For now, most Americans leisurely enjoy the holiday as summer's last bath.
I'd just like to make just one comment about Labor Day and about the city of West Valley. Our city is comprised of a lot of blue-collar workers who are laborers and perform vital roles in our community. Many do belong to unions, but many do not belong to unions, to still provide the services that make our community a vibrant community. And so I think we should always remember those hard workers in our community. Also, I'd like to have everybody stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the U.S. of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Vincent. As is our tradition in our special recognition portion of our meeting, we have a scout troop here, and we would invite one of the representatives of their boys to come forward and state their troop number, their schools that they attend, and what merit badge or activity they're working on by being here.
I'm Tessa Sadler. I'm from...
Which school do you attend?
Dunning Ridge, and I'm from Troop 951. And I'm working on second class.
Okay. Well, welcome to you. We appreciate you coming this evening. Thank you. And I believe those are the only scouts, well, official scout troops that are here. Tonight, under our special recognition, we wanted to take this opportunity with the recent event of our former mayor, Dennis Nordfeld, who recently passed away. To remember him, and... Yes, there we go. We do have a picture of him. And certainly, all of us were deeply saddened by his passing. And although he had faced some challenges health-wise, we were hopeful that he would continue with us for quite a while. I thought it might be appropriate to just quickly summarize some of the events from his life. He was born in Salina, Utah, and grew up in Moab, Utah. Starting early age, he was student body president. I did not know him then, although we weren't far from each other. I went to second grade in Salina, grew up in Green River, Utah, just down the street, and went to Moab often for sports. And I didn't really get to know him till way later in our lives. He was part of the Utah Highway Patrol from May of 1967 through, what, about '87? He was there for quite a while, retiring from there. And when he retired from the Highway Patrol, then he was hired on as chief of West Valley City Police Department, where he served from 1987 to 1998. And then became the Olympic coordinator for the city. And it was around that time when I got to know him. And he then was appointed, as West Valley City's mayor, to complete Jerry Wright's term of office. And then, following that, was elected to his own four-year term. It is interesting to see those things that he did in his life. And we talk more about those governmental things that he did. And certainly, even after serving as mayor and doing other things, most recently, he was appointed to the Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control, serving on the three-member commission. And he was also employed by EDC Utah, the Economic Development Corporation of Utah. And I ran into him often there, and it just seems like he was involved in many things. And I would just run into him all the time. And as he did with everyone, treated me as though I were a lifelong friend. And of course, I wasn't. Wish I would have been. But we did get acquainted and been to his home a number of times, as he would assist me, as I would come and ask him questions. He was always a fountain of knowledge, and we would discuss things. As I would sit in his home, and he'd always invite me in. We'd have great conversations along with great stories. But certainly, he had an impact. As we look at what he did in West Valley City, he brought a very special and unique perspective to the role of mayor, with his background in law enforcement, as well as the attitude that he brought, which was one of collaboration. When I came here to the city, one of the things that people talked to me about were former mayors, including Mayor Nordfeld. And it was interesting to hear the comments. And I couldn't find any bad ones. Now, that's kind of hard to do when you hold the position of a high visibility like a mayor. You can't please everyone. But if anyone ever came close to it, it would be Dennis Nordfeld, just by his attitude and the way he treated people. You know, the city has lost a great member of its community. But I think as well, the state has lost as well because of his involvement. There were many other things that he was involved in. Certainly, his church service, serving, as I understand, bishop, stake president, temple worker. He had, it was on a church service mission until just fairly recently, I believe. And so, just involved in everything that was good. There are not a lot of people who can claim to have that type of experience and to share it with so many. I know that my words are certainly very inadequate to describe what he accomplished and what he did in life. But in some way, I believe, as I give voice to certainly the concerns of the council and to many members of our city, we do appreciate what he did for us. And just the kindness that he showed to people and to everyone he came in contact with. With that, we will perhaps allow, I believe, a couple of council members wanted to add a few comments. And so, we will turn to them, whoever would like. Councilman Vincent?
Thank you, Mayor. Nordfeld family. I served with Dennis. Was on the city council when Mayor Wright passed away. And served on the council as we chose a new mayor to fill that spot. And we couldn't have chosen a finer man than Dennis to do that. He didn't seek the office. I think we had to twist his arm. He was retired and happy, and we twisted his arm to throw his hat in the ring. And we couldn't, like I say, we couldn't have picked a finer man. Shortly after he was put in as mayor, of course, the city manager spent a lot of time in military service, which put a lot of pressure on Dennis to do a lot of heavy whipping that most mayors aren't needing to do. He filled a vital role during the time that Wayne was away and served his community. Dennis was not a politician. He was a statesman. And I appreciate his example and his friendship. And to the family, thank you for sharing him with us.
Councilman Buhler?
Thank you, Mayor. And I, on the other hand, did not get to serve with Dennis while he was in office. And I was a little bit in awe of him as I met him and became acquainted with him, because he was an important man, and he was a doer, and he was very well thought of. But he had a way of making everybody, I'm sure, feel like they were important and that he was happy to see them. At least, that's how he always made me feel, and I always appreciated that. As Councilman Vincent said, he was not a politician. He was a public servant. And an example to me, as I try to be a public servant, of what a public servant should be. And I'm thankful for the acquaintance that I had with him and the good family that he had. It's funny, as you get to know people a little bit better, you find other connections and ways that you are acquainted with people. And I'm going to miss him, and I'm thankful for that acquaintance that I had with him.
Councilman Rushden?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be brief, as I'm sure we'll, you know, hear lots of better tributes to former Mayor Nordfeld and my good mentor as the mayor when I was first elected to the council. So I'll just tell you, you know, what he meant to me and what he meant to the city council and what he meant for the city from my point of view. But, you know, when I was first elected, he sat me down and gave me some just invaluable advice of serving. And it's made me a lot better public servant than I am today by him taking the time to advise and to mentor and to be a listening ear on that. And a lot of that was encouraging me to be involved in many extra activities in representing the city. And he was the mayor, and he was well thought of, and he was well-liked and well-respected. But he was also not above sending a junior council member to fill in in his stead and to help them learn from the experience and to grow and to be a future leader in the city. And so, I respect him tremendously for that. He was instrumental in the city council level, the way that this government, as sometimes we refer to jokingly as the seven-headed monster, because we have seven people from seven different backgrounds and seven opinions that try to get together and build consensus on the best way to lead the city. And Dennis was the best example of taking those seven opinions and molding it into one common theme or one common policy that we could all live with and agree with. And it was instrumental in the city council. As far as the city goes, Dennis was really the man that got us a lot of the respect that we deserved. And I think a lot of times, sometimes as the second-largest city, we wave our hands and try to get the attention of the rest of the community and the state. And Dennis was able to do that. And I respect him tremendously. That sometimes, when we are on this dais or in public life, sometimes we become a little bit of apologists. And sometimes, people would say things negative about the city. We try to sugarcoat it or whitewash it. Dennis was a fierce and staunch defender of West Valley City. And in times where I think other of us may have shirked from defending the city, Dennis would do it right from the pulpit and right in the middle of a meeting and tell them that, no, we are a great place, and we're working hard to become even a better place. And that was good. And so, I think maybe as a final story, I think the way that I will remember Dennis in this one setting, I think that sums it up, is he had come to me and asked if I might take a little initiative and try to organize a city council service project, and so we could try to lead more by example in the city, and which I undertook and organized us to paint some graffiti. And Councilmember Vincent came, and myself and the mayor, and we were painting graffiti on this wall. And we hustled to get done before the rain came down. And as the rain came down and the wind started swirling in that, we were hustling to get out of there. A garbage can had tipped over and spread garbage all across a road. And we all kind of looked at each other. Dennis, without, you know, pausing at all, went over and picked the garbage can up and started piling the garbage right back into the can. And Steve and I hurried, scooted up, and grabbed some of the wind-blown trash and filled it back up in the trash can and set it down. And when we got the can upright in the midst of still strong winds, Dennis turned to Steve and I and said, "Now, let's hurry up and get out of here before it blows over again." And I think that his sense of humor and his desire to serve our city was well demonstrated that day. It'll be a fond memory that I have. And thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I, in honor to get to know Mayor Dennis Nordfeld, he's a great man. And I just feel very comfortable to go to him and ask him for help. I remember in 2006, and I was in charge for trying to build a monument, Alliance Monument, inside the Utah Cultural Association Center in that area. And we were struggling to raise the money. So I asked him, is there any way you can help us out to go on to the KRCL radio? It's a one-hour Vietnamese language from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And we can have a Q&amp;A show there. So maybe you can help us out? And he was willing to do that. He went there with me, and I translated for him. And we went out to that one-hour radio show. And later, we got a lot of people to donate money to us, and we were able to build the monument. And it's great. So we have it right now, the monument inside the UCCC. There's a big head from Dennis Nordfeld. He's a great man, and he's a good heart and a warm person. And I enjoy to come to him and ask some opinions, some questions, or help. And I think it's an honor to know him. I would miss him very much.
Thank you. Councilman Lang?
My name is Short. I just want to thank his family for sharing him with the city, because I think our city is a better place. And I was proud to be, I am still proud to be a West Valley City person. And I know Dennis was. And he did make you feel like he had known you forever. Anytime you met him, he remembered everything about you, talked to you like you've been his friend forever. And I really did appreciate that in his personality. But I do want to thank you, because I know it does take time from your time with your family to serve as much as he did. And I appreciate that from you.
I talked with Councilman Nordfeld, and he wasn't sure. But if you would like to, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope that you'll allow me to speak, not as a council member, but as a representative of our family, that he did love this city. And he considered the people here, the staff, his fellow council members, his second family. And he's had the best stories that you had shared with him, the experiences that you shared with him. And we love to hear them. We're all proud of our city because of our dad. And he did leave a legacy for us. And we appreciate all that you did for him. And I just especially want the staff to know and to pass on to their fellow departments that he loved you and he considered you his good friends. Thank you.
Thank you. To the council, I guess we've lost a great friend, an example and a mentor. To the family, we offer our condolences. Appreciate your sharing him with us. To Dennis, I say, Godspeed, and don't leave us too far behind. He's going to be busy up there, and we'll have to catch up with him at some point. But I think I would like to close with a couple of comments that he made that were attributed to him. He said, "The government should only do what its citizens want to have done but cannot do for themselves." As mayor, he said he would focus on how city decisions affect families and emphasize, whatever possible, whenever possible, the importance of a traditional family. And certainly, family was important to him. I was asked by the media, and even though I didn't know him well, I knew enough that one of the most important things to him was his family. They asked me to summarize, you know, to summarize his life. But reporters can ask crazy questions, but I had thought about it and was a little prepared. And I actually found that I thought I could do it in one word. And this is the word that I used: beloved. Because of how he treated people. He treated them all as friends. Now, how he could take another elected official who probably wrote it a number of times like he didn't want me to when I was in the legislature, he was still very, very kind to me. We will certainly miss his role. Thank you very much. What we would like to do is just stand for a moment, for a moment of silence in recognition Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. Thanks to all of the family members who came. We just appreciate the great legacy left. Oh, yeah, Nigel, I don't know how many grandchildren...
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
So far.
And a bunch of you here today. Thank you for coming. We will now move on back to our regular business. You're welcome to stay if you would like. But we'll go on with our regular business now. And if you need to get up and leave, you're certainly welcome to do so. That happens routinely. Scouts have to stay. We will now go to approval of our minutes. To the council for action.
May I move for approval of the minutes of August 19th, 2014, regular meeting?
Councilman Buhler has the motion before us. Do we have a second? Second. Councilman Young has the second. The motion is properly before us. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we will place for a vote the approval of the minutes of August 14th, 2014, our regular meeting. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion passed and Okay. Next, we have our public comment period. We have one person who has signed up to address I actually, because it's official, I like numbers, why? I make sure that we have a timer. Because we allot five minutes to everyone who comes, but no more than that. Justin Merkley, I believe, if you would like to come forward and state your name and address for the record, and then the five minutes is yours.
My name is Justin Merkey. My address is 6231 Belmont Downs Court, West Valley City, Utah. I come to put the bug in your guys' ear again about the rodeo grounds. I ain't going to quit. And I just need to, my condolences. And I just, I need help to go about this. And that's why I come to you guys for help, to see how we can go about doing this, I mean, if it's even a possibility. And like, like I say, you know, there's properties and I don't know how to go about, you know, making an offer, anything like that. And I mean, I've talked to a couple of people, and they're like, you know, as long as you show interest in it and you want to put money down or, you know, tell them exactly what's going on, and tell it to them, they don't really care. They all, you know, it's always about the bottom dollar. So, I mean, if, that's where I come to you guys and see how we can go about doing this, if you guys are interested at all. And so, and it'll all make you guys, all of us legacies of West Valley, putting a rodeo ground in there, and you can use that later on in life, too. So that's why I come to you guys for it. Other than that, love the city. Been living there my whole life. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I believe that was the only public comment we had scheduled. To our assistant city manager, any comments?
No, sir.
No, sir.
I do believe that there's a little bit of research going on to gather some information.
Mr. Murkey, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to talk with our Parks and Recreation yet, but if you haven't, we'll make sure this evening that he gets your information and talk to you about that process.
Thank you. To the council then for comments. Councilman Buehler.
Thank you. And I'm going to comment on the rodeo question. I know there are some of us that leave town and go and watch rodeos and, you know, we don't have to go too far. There's rodeo in West Jordan. We always have the Days of Forty-Seven. Usually in Salt Lake, we've had that here in West Valley a time or two as well. Of course, we try to serve all of our residents, but this is something certainly we ought to study before it's too late. So I know there's some looking into it being done. Mr. Isaac, will this be on our upcoming study meeting agenda for discussion sometime?
If the council desires, we could bring that up as a discussion item, yes.
I think we ought to have that discussion as part of our overall Parks and Recreation
Further comments? Thank, oh, Councilman Young.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I agree with my friend here, Steve Buehler. In Lee High, a small town, but they have rodeo there and they generate a lot of income and interest in the people. They have to cross the town from Salt Lake County down to Utah County to watch a rodeo. And here, we are second-largest city in the state. I think we can find a leeway and try to figure out and try to find the crowd for that rodeo. I think it's not only for people to go watch, but also we generate some revenue for our city, too.
Thank you. With that, then, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, our resolutions. We have Resolution 14-147, an interlocal cooperative agreement between West Jordan City and West Valley City. We remind you that these have been previously discussed in our last city council study meeting, so we've had discussion on it. This particular one is for 5600 West between 6200 South and 6600 South. We are cooperating with them to expand the width of that road and have it more consistent. West Jordan has responsibility for about three-fourths of this area between the 6200 South and 6600 South, and our city has about a fourth of the area. So we are joining with them and creating this agreement. And the proposal is to spend up to, but not to exceed $300,000 to complete that section of road. And that will be, they'll bid it out sometime later this fall and be completed approximately a year or so from now. With that, then, to the council for discussion or action. Councilman Benson.
Yeah. Mayor, this is a piece of road that I travel quite a bit to go visit my mother-in-law. And I'm sure our Diamond Summit residents here probably travel that piece of road and see where it narrows down and will be grateful that it'll finally be widened and taken care of. So with that, I move for approval of Resolution 14-147.
We have the motion before us. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Councilman Rushton has the second. The motion is properly before us. Any discussion to the motion?
I think...
Councilman Rushton.
I would just add to Councilmember Vincent's comments that this has obviously become a very important corridor in our city and as well as a connector to the city. And just for those that do live up there, 2015 in the fall is the expected completion date when all done. So look for that in a little over a year's time.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of Resolution 14-147, an interlocal cooperative agreement with West Jordan City to complete that section of 5600 West, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we go to Resolution 14-148. This is a delay agreement with Salt Lake County and this is for property at approximately 6200 West, 6200 South. This is where Lodestone Park is. That's being developed in phases and Salt Lake County Parks and Recreation is installing sidewalk and streetlights in phases. So it's taking some time and this allows the county to install that over time rather than all at once. It's my understanding of that agreement. So ultimately, of course, it has to be finished, but it's being done in sections as budget permits. And so we look forward eventually to that completion. With that introduction, then, to the council for action and comment. Mayor? Councilman Benson.
Again, this falls in my district and we have the very people here that will be using this park and this road. And it's going to be a great asset to the Diamond Summit area to have a regional park cloaked by. And so with that, I'm for approval of Resolution 14-148.
Thank you. The motion is properly before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Buehler has the second. It is now before us. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of Resolution 14-148, this agreement with Salt Lake County Parks and Recreation to begin installing in phases over time sidewalks and streetlights for that park, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. That completes our regular business for our council, regular city council meeting tonight. I believe there is no need for an executive session.
No, sir.
So our work with this meeting is done. However, immediately following this, there will be two very brief meetings of our redevelopment agency and our housing authority. And so we will go to those. But we need to officially end this meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. This regular city council meeting is adjourned.
And I will call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency. And we've had an opening ceremony and the roll call shows that all members of this board are present. Item four on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from August 12th, 2014's regular meeting. Mr. Bigelow.
Motion to approve the minutes of August 12th.
Second.
Okay, we have a... My motion before the board to approve the minutes of the August 12th, 2014 meeting as presented, is there any discussion to that? And we'll ask all those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are approved. We'll now turn to our acting chief executive officer to ask for any communications or reports for tonight.
There is none, sir.
Okay. And seeing no other business, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourned the RDA, please say aye.
Aye.
Then this body will stand adjourned.
I call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Housing Authority. Note that we've had an opening ceremony and all members of this body are present. Item four on the agenda is the minutes on August 12th, 2014, for your consideration.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
A second by Mr. Hahn. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Appears that it has passed unanimously. Mr. Isaac, turn to you for any communications or report.
Present, sir.
We do have a resolution. Would you introduce that, please, Resolution 14-04?
Thank you, sir. Every year, we are required by HUD to submit a Section 8 Management Assessment Program that basically analyzes or is an assessment of our financial responsibilities with respect to our housing agencies. So this report now is before the Housing Board to approve. We've already answered the document and now we're required to send that off by resolution from council.
And Mr. Isaac, this report fulfills our requirements with HUD?
That's correct.
To the board, any questions or discussion with respect to the Resolution 14-04? Or a motion? Mr. Norfeld.
I move for approval of Resolution 14-04.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? Now we'll call it for a vote. All in favor of approving Resolution 14-04, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution passes unanimously. The next item is to adjourn, having concluded our business, entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.